All right. Thank you for coming, everybody. We'll call the Committee of the Whole June 28, 2021 meeting to order. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Burton.
Here.
Flory.
Present.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mohal.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten present.
Thank you. Under public comment, I don't think we have anybody registered, but I'll go ahead and fire away here. So we had Heritage Days, and there are some individuals that I really wanted to thank. I'm sure I'm not going to get them all, but I'll do the best I can. I would like to thank Gina, Abby, Danny, Brent, Sarah, Erica, Public Works Department, Police Chief Woody, his department, Police Chief, or Fire Chief Heiser in his department, and any of the aldermen that attended, aldermen on the float, the city float, Alderman Stevens, Alderwoman Freeman, Alderman Snow, thank you, Alderman Porter, thank you, and Alderwoman Mohal, thank you. There might have been some other aldermen and women there that I missed, but... Okay, on a different float, okay, right. That's okay. You were there. Thank you, Alderwoman Frank. So tonight, I had asked the council, I had called the council and I'd talked to the aldermen, all the aldermen that I could, and I'd asked Mike Dunn with R1 to come here tonight to give a brief update as to railroad in this community and the status of it. So, Mike, would you please come up podium, state your name? Thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. Some familiar faces, some I haven't had the chance to meet yet. I represent Region One Planning Council, which Belvedere is one of six government owners of, and those owners are Machesney Park, Loves Park, Belvedere, Rockford, Boone County, and Winnebago County. We have about thirty local government partners, but you all are part of the six ownership group. And something that has occurred at the organization way prior to my arrival, probably going back twenty years now, was advocating for some sort of passenger rail solution from downtown Chicago into Belvedere and then Rockford. Region One Planning Council is what's called a federal MPO, MPO standing for Metropolitan Planning Organization. Belvedere joined that by federal requirement because of the census in 2003, based on the 2000 census. You and Boone County became part of the Rockford, called Rockford because of the federal government's designation, the Rockford MSA and the Rockford urbanized area. And so, as a member of the MPO, we assist in trying to find federal highway funding for all of you and doing federal transportation planning. Recently, we awarded money to the Public Works Department for Appleton Road improvements, for example. And so, as an MPO, for about twenty-five years, our organization has been working with IDOT, the state of Illinois, and interest in Chicagoland to figure out how we could connect passenger rail to our area. Last time around, prior to the project being canceled in 2015, what was called RMAP, but the MPO, was the lead agency. This time, it is not. IDOT has taken on that role, and I can share with all of you what I do know about how that project's coming along, but in this case, our organization is simply being the lead agency on rail station planning. And so, based on the type of service we all might be getting, IDOT has asked our organization to work with the city of Belvedere and the city of Rockford in trying to see what the eventual platform and station would look like and be. It can go back to the original plan, it can be something entirely different. In Belvedere, in Rockford, Rockford doesn't have a choice. Rockford's federally required to have it in their downtown. Belvedere has flexibility. And so, with that, we wanted, after speaking to the mayor and some of the staff, he asked that I come and give an update on where that project stands. I'm happy to answer questions about what I know IDOT is working on, as well as some of the ideas that we're looking at rail station siting. When I say looking at rail station siting, I want to also add that we don't look at just the platform or the shelter, we look at parking and what the demand on parking might be, we look at competing land use around the station, and what sort of economic development could occur around the station, what we should plan for, for residential and commercial as a result of having passenger rail service. And then we also look at, I guess potentially, what public amenities are needed as well to support the traffic coming to and from, and making sure that it's walkable and it focuses on all forms of mobility. And so, with that, I'm happy to entertain questions, Mayor, or give a more detailed update.
Well, I did want the council and the public to understand that after I had taken office, I was brought up to speed that, in fact, there was a site that had been chosen by the city of Belvedere, or...
Sure.
By, for the city of Belvedere, put it that way. And then, later on, I had received a letter from you, and it pointed out that perhaps that wasn't written in granite. And so, with that being said, I thought I had inquired of the council, and they were not aware that a decision had been made for the park and ride. I had talked with our council, and he was not aware of it, and I talked with our Department of Public Works, and he was not aware of it. So with that being said, I certainly wasn't aware of it, I just took office, but I did think that the council should be aware of it, the public should be aware of it, and if we have an opportunity to make that call, then I believe that's the right thing to do. I don't think that it's necessarily my call or any one individual's call. So, I appreciate you coming over here tonight, because that gives everybody, brings everybody up to speed as much as I am.
Sure, Mayor, yeah. In 2011, there was a program called NICD, and that study, it was a very expensive study, and it was, you know, I don't know if everybody remembers, but there was debate on whether the line would come through Belvedere or come through Genoa. And that study kind of kicked that off, and that was whether the passenger rail service would use what was called the Canadian National, or the CN, or the Union Pacific, which is a UP. At that time, there was a lot of debate, again, I wasn't around for it, and they had settled that it would come through Belvedere and be on the UP, and at that point, from my understanding, Belvedere put a lot of energy and treasure into planning for that in downtown Belvedere. In 2015, at the beginning of the Rauner administration, Governor Rauner and the Secretary of Transportation had killed and canceled that project, and the project was considered dead. Huntley, which is also on the line, lost a tremendous amount of money. City of Rockford had to pay back a lot of federal money on some of their rail station siting, so everybody along the line that had started working on rail stations lost a lot of money locally on that. We saw, two years now, two years ago, May 2019, the current administration in the Capitol Bill put close to $275 million in an appropriation back towards restoring that service, and now IDOT is in charge of it, and IDOT is going to choose an operator. That operator might not be Amtrak. Amtrak is only one of many options. So this service might not be run by Amtrak. At that time, in about June, July, twenty, and again, I report to a Board of Directors of mayors and county chairman, at that time, in May, June 2019, checking in with the city of Belvedere, was told, "We don't want it in downtown Belvedere anymore, we would like to have it out at Irene Road, where the Union Pacific connects with it, and do a park and ride," like people often attribute to maybe when they say big timber, but the Randall Road Metro Station off of I-90 and Randall Road. I think that was the, and harking back to the Flora Plan, I think there was an attitude towards, "We want it out by I-90, get a lot of traffic off I-90." My organization, or myself, we don't dictate those things, we simply listen to local government and let local government, through your mayor, determine exactly what the strategic direction is. That's why we exist, is to be that conduit to the feds and to the state. So, you know, it's not too late, the mayor just participated in the first consultant meeting last Thursday, which was a very introductory meeting, and so there's a lot of time to make the decision, and the decision doesn't even have to be made now, but at some point, we're going to have to, as a community here and a community in Rockford, be very clear with the state on what our expectation for the rail platform is.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn, and so, any questions we have for Mr. Dunn? Alderwoman Freeman?
So, it's my understanding that the previous mayor was basically unilaterally making a decision to go with the Flora Plan and do a park and ride out on Irene Road without advice or consult from the council? And now, Mayor Morris has decided that this is a council, community decision, and is now bringing it to us for our advice and counsel and consent, right? So there is a, it would have been presented to us as, "This is what we're doing with no other option," and now it's going to be presented to us as, "Here are our two options."
It sure sounds like that. I can't speak to it, I'm not sure what happens, again, I'm managing a lot of local governments, how each government conducts their business is out of my purview, Alderwoman. I can't speak to that, but I can tell you that the direction we were given as a regional body was, that's our goal, to place it there.
And if, and I'll add to that, quite frankly, I wasn't aware that there was any sort of an agreement that was made where the train would stop. I do know that I had chatted with former Mayor Braden after I'd realized that, because I know during his administration, one of his terms, there was a shovel-ready project that was designated for the downtown. And the way I look at it is, the city council, they represent the community, and as well as I do, but any information that I have regarding this, you should have. And I had looked at it as if we don't at least discuss or consider the option, the options that we have, then for our downtown, and what, we had actually hired an architect, and he had designed, part of that was a design for the train. So it's up to us as alder, as aldermen and women to make that decision, that's your decision, you know, and whatever you decide, I would say that it has been discussed about the options for a train and what that might do for economic development downtown, and I think we're going to get one crack at it, we can't have two stations, we can't have two stops. So with that one crack at it, everybody ought to be able to weigh in, and that ought to be an elected officials from each ward, it ought to be their decision. So, that's where we stand. Alderman Snow?
And Mike, I don't know if you'd be able to answer this, but so, back when they were talking about the train, they were talking about having to do upgrades to the track from one end to the other, is that still part of the program?
Yes, sir, most of that dollar amount is going towards, it's corporate welfare, it's going towards the Union Pacific to upgrade their own rail, right? And so, a good amount of that dollar is going to the Union Pacific to make sure that track can support high-speed passenger service. A lot of grade crossings are being looked at, the grade crossings are what drive a lot of the dollar amount, and then obviously some of the control systems along the route that need to be upgraded as well. You're welcome.
Alderman Porter?
So I had heard that they're actually going to have to put in a second rail, side by side with the others, is that true?
You know, speaking to, so IDOT also has a consultant, we have a consultant for the station planning, IDOT has a consultant called WSP. From my understanding, it's not really necessary. And, you know, obviously by the UP's rail yards, that might be necessary, depending on how the UP and IDOT figure out what the traffic might be, we don't want the passenger train, and the passenger train now is being looked at for kind of peak times, busy times, because if we don't have it leave during peak times, people won't ride it. And so, I do know that there has been talk about areas where freight movement, or the lack of freight movement on the rail, might jam things up. So I, I'm not smart enough to know if it would be at the rail yards, there's certain parts where there'd be a second line, but for the most part, I believe they can use the existing line, such as when it comes into the city of Rockford and crosses the Rock River, it'll only be on a single line.
Alderman Flory?
So, thank you. I'm not sure you can answer this tonight, but is there a way, I know you said there were some things you went into talking about picking a location, but can you talk to the pros and cons of having a downtown location versus an Irene Road location, or would that be something to talk about at a later meeting?
Both, and so, the consultant was hired by us at our cost. We will be allowing a lot of public participation, if you have in your wards or in the community wanting to get the consultant in front of the citizens of Belvedere or other stakeholders, we're happy to arrange for that. If all of you would like to meet with the consultants, we can arrange for that, too. That was part of the cost in bringing them on. As far as the pros and cons conceptually, and I have no bias towards this, I can tell you that IDOT wants to have the most ridership possible. We want, if for $300 million, it'll probably be north of there when they're all done with it, but for $300 million, they don't want this thing to fail two or three years in because nobody ran it, or wrote it, pardon me. And so, IDOT's goal is to get the best ridership calculation possible and have that then pencil out. You know, but there are, there are competing goals to just ridership. There are safety issues, first and foremost, but two, then there are, you know, TOD, what's called TOD, Transit Oriented Development Aspirations, where then, when you place a terminal or a station, that the impact is that people that might not want a car for their first means of mobility, people that might want to, now that we've been through the pandemic, and might want to work from home, right, but have a connection to an urban center, but not maybe five days a week, maybe one day a week or two days a week, that we now see the resulting economic development come from being on a rail line. And so, in that case, where there's been success, has been in a dense environment with a lot of downtown commercial, a lot of downtown amenities, a lot of mixed-use residential. And so, it really is up to this body, up to the city, to determine if, do you want to seed future development, whatever that may be, off the interstate with a potential workforce component, where a workforce can arrive by train to industry, right? Do you want that there by I-90? Do you want people from outside Belvedere saying, "You know what, I'm not going to drive to the Rockford Station, I'm not going to drive to the Algen Station, I'm going to drive just enough to get off at Irene, and then I'm going to park my car." So do you want that outside travel, coming into Belvedere, maybe spending some money at a convenience store or something like that, right, and then getting on the train? Or do you believe that, hey, it's only a hop, skip, and then jump from Irene to downtown, people will make that movement downtown? And that's what the consultant's for, to tell us, I can't, I can't tell you that, right? Will the consultant say, "You know what, if they're getting off at Irene anyway, they can haul down US-20, come up to downtown, it's all the same." How inviting is your downtown? How easy is it to get through traffic control and road systems and the signals to your downtown, and how good is your parking downtown, right? Lot of things to consider in determining if downtown can compete with a park and ride off the interstate. And, again, I'm probably being long-winded, but to consider what kind of development do you want as a benefit to downtown versus out on I-90? You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you for the update, I thought it was important that the council know as much as I know, and we'll go ahead and figure this out together.
Thank you, Mayor, and I really appreciate the time to check in with all of you, and again, at any time that you want, our planners, we have eight transportation planners on staff, anytime you want us back to go into more detail, we're always happy to do so.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So is there a time limit, a timeframe where we have to pretty much make this decision by?
I don't think there's any pressure. So, originally, two years ago, the goal was to have the service going by 2024. Due to the pandemic and just how we all operate in Illinois, they're going to be lucky to get to the beginning of 2026. And so, our study in trying to plan for the stations is a twelve-month study, starting four days ago. So, Bad Pond Train hasn't left the station, but I mean, literally, while we've been giving past direction, it was all conceptual, and we just have such good timing now that everybody's communicating to really start the twelve-month clock and give the consultant as much feedback as all of you would like to. Yep.
Anything else for Mr. Dunn? All right.
Thank you again, have a great night.
Thank you for coming over, appreciate it.
I'd like to make a suggestion on...
Alderman Stevens? Sure.
The presentations to the police and fire, there's, some of them have got a little bit of a time constraint, I really don't want to sit through our boring stuff, so if we could move that up to now?
That's, that's next, yeah. So, the police awards, chief, if there's no objection from the rest of council, we'll just go ahead and have Chief Woody make his presentations. Thank you, Alderman Stevens? Yep. And Chief Heiser?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, city council, so I just wanted to kind of give you a summary of what we're going to be doing here tonight, presenting some awards for an incident that occurred for a medical call that was handled by both Belvedere Police Department, Belvedere Fire Department, as well as members of our community. Sean Pem here was one of the first people on the scene, so we are going to be presenting him with the certificate of appreciation. Mr. Pem, on May 18, 2021, you were in the area of South Town Drive, Pearl Street, when you saw a woman approach a vehicle that was stopped a few cars in front of you. You heard the woman start to scream, and when you pulled forward, the woman started yelling that the man was not breathing. Without hesitation, you checked to see if the car door was unlocked, and when it appeared, the man was unconscious, you pulled him from the driver's seat, checked to see if he was breathing or had a pulse. When there were no signs of life, you began CPR while 911 was being called. You continued CPR until relieved by first responders who arrived on scene. As a paramedic, you are aware, the sooner CPR efforts are initiated, the better the chance of saving a person's life. Mr. Pem, your immediate and selfless response to a life-threatening situation is recognized and greatly appreciated. On behalf of the Belvedere Police Department, the Belvedere Fire Department, you are hereby presented with this certificate of appreciation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. I mean, I appreciate that. I'm a very keep-to-myself kind of person, I'm a servant leadership, I was in military for a long time, I was a deputy sheriff, firefighter, paramedic, kind of done the gamut of everything, so I give to my community, I still give to my community, I'm one of the senior volunteers with the organization Oscar Mike Foundation, I actually have a program going on right now as we speak, with a bunch of adaptive veterans, so we do a whole program with them, and this is just something that's second nature to myself, and if my parents were in that same situation, I would hope that somebody would stop and do the same thing that I did, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as Chief Woody was explaining, on May 18, 2021, engine number 101, with Lieutenant Draw, firefighter Vaughn, and probationary firefighter Vanderbrook responded for an unresponsive male slumped over the wheel at Pearl and 20. Upon their arrival, two bystanders had the unresponsive male out of the car and were administering CPR. Lieutenant and his crew started lifesaving protocols, which included drug administration, opening of the airway, and continuous CPR with AED. Additionally, Belvedere police officers Moore and Lane, from all accounts, were heavily involved with the lifesaving efforts, assisting fire and lifeline crews with compressions. The 86-year-old male did pass several days later from his illness, but what many don't realize is because of the skills and selflessness of all bystanders, fire, police, and lifeline personnel, this man's family had a chance, they had a chance to say their goodbyes on their terms, surrounded by loving family members. So, I'm going to award a lifesaving award to Troy here, and Troy's just been with us a couple months now? Yeah, so, very good. Let me read it to you, Troy? Shouldn't have took my glasses off. Okay, this lifesaving award is presented to firefighter Troy Vanderbrook on this 28th day of June 2021, as for your quick and skillful medical care and tireless efforts on the morning of May 18, 2021. So, Troy, thank you.
Got to have Officers Moore, Lane, and Sergeant Polno step up, please? So these officers also will be receiving lifesaving awards, as well as lifesaving ribbons that they'll wear on their uniforms, so, Officer Moore? Perfect. On May 18, 2021, you responded to the area of Pearl Street and South Town Drive for a report of a medical emergency. Once you were on scene, you discovered Belvedere Fire Paramedics were performing CPR, had attached their AED on an unresponsive 86-year-old male. Due to the extent and duration of the emergency, you relieved the Belvedere Fire Department paramedic and took over conducting chest compressions in an attempt to resuscitate the victim. You continued your lifesaving efforts to the point of exhaustion, ultimately relieved by Officer Lane. Members of the public, Belvedere Fire Department, and Belvedere Police Department worked together and utilized their training in an attempt to save someone who was in danger of losing their life. Officer Moore, your dedication and commitment to the Belvedere community is recognized and greatly appreciated. On behalf of the city of Belvedere and the Belvedere Police Department, you are hereby presented with the lifesaving award. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Officer Lane, if I could have you step up, please? On May 18, 2021, you responded to the area of Pearl Street and South Town Drive for a report of a medical emergency. Once you were on scene, you discovered Officer Moore and the Belvedere Fire Department were performing lifesaving efforts on an unresponsive 86-year-old male. You relieved Officer Moore, continued chest compressions to circulate blood and oxygen through the body in an attempt to save someone who was in danger of losing their life. You continued lifesaving efforts until you were relieved by... You continued lifesaving efforts until you were relieved by Sergeant Polnow. Officer Lane, your dedication and commitment to Belvidere community is recognized, greatly appreciated. On behalf of the city of Belvidere, the Belvidere Police Department, you are hereby presented with the lifesaving award. Congratulations. And last but not least, on May 18th, 2021, Sergeant Polnow, you responded to the area of Pearl Street and South Town Drive for a report of a medical emergency. Once you were on scene, you discovered Officer Lane and the Belvidere Fire Department were performing lifesaving efforts on an unresponsive 86-year-old male. You relieved Officer Lane, continued chest compressions to circulate blood and oxygen through the body in an attempt to save him from losing his life. You continued lifesaving efforts until the victim was stable enough to transport to the hospital. Sergeant Polnow, your dedication and commitment to the Belvidere community is recognized and greatly appreciated. On behalf of the city of Belvidere and the Belvidere Police Department, you are hereby presented with the lifesaving award. Congratulations.
Chief, I know that sometimes we take for granted what our officers do and our firefighters. So on behalf of the city, on behalf of myself, I appreciate you recognizing Officer Moore, Officer Lane, and Sergeant Polnow, and firefighter Vanderbrook. So welcome to you, too. Thank you very much. So thank you all. We appreciate your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so we'll go back here under item two, Public Safety, New Business. Chief Woody, is there any update, any other update you would like to make here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Since the last update last month, we've just got the first notable items for the Police Department that I would bring to your attention in terms of body cam update. The department has been able to get the hardware and software in place for the body cams. So the next phase is equipping the squad cars and the officers with the equipment necessary to go live. We'll be doing that on a test basis with one officer, Officer Reese, to work out any potential issues that Panasonic may run into. And depending on what, if any, issues that we encounter, will dictate that timeline, but that's where we're at now. So assuming that things go flawlessly, we will be equipping the rest of the department and vehicles with the equipment necessary to provide all of our officers with body cams. If there's no questions about that, I'll move on to the next lateral hire update. We have currently three lateral hires in the process. They are scheduled for polygraphs here in the near future, and then we will go back to the Fire and Police Commission for review of those polygraphs and then interviews. K-9 Shep. K-9 Shep, the surgery went well. There wasn't any complications from the surgery itself. However, K-9 Shep has been dealing with a post-op infection that he's been needing treatment for. So he's, Officer Reese has been going back and forth to UW Madison for the treatment of the infection. He's currently on antibiotics and being monitored by UW staff. So it's too soon to know exactly what the ultimate prognosis is going to be, but they're monitoring the infection, and then ultimately will decide what, if anything, needs to be done, depending on whether or not the infection clears up. COSAP update. So I touched base with Officer Schwartz, who is our COSAP officer. She's provided me with the following update. Since June 1st, which was the program's start, over the last three weeks, she's had 48 contacts, five substance abuse-related contacts, 28 mental health-related, and 15 domestic-related contacts. She shared with me one particular circumstance that she's been dealing with over the last three weeks. She was referred, well, patrol referred to her a 25-year-old Turkish immigrant that they had encountered on a domestic call. The female was needing help getting out of a controlling relationship. Apparently, she had moved to the U.S. in 2020. During the course of the relationship, she learned that the boyfriend was very controlling, would not allow her to do things without him, would hold her citizenship over her head, felt trapped, didn't have a support system here, and so she contacted police requesting help and was referred to Officer Schwartz. Officer Schwartz assisted her by taking her to the courthouse to obtain an order of protection, where she received an emergency order of protection, and was able to stay in her home. During that two-week period, she had been referred to Prairie State Legal Service by Officer Schwartz, which for those who don't know, it's a free legal service for low-income individuals. Prairie State has taken her case and will help her with the legal proceedings. The female decided she wanted to leave the relationship, but did not want the boyfriend to know for fear he would not leave her alone or jeopardize the place she was staying at. She saved enough money to be able to get herself out of the relationship. While awaiting for her court date for the OP extension, she found a safe place to stay, purchased a plane ticket with the money she'd saved. Officer Schwartz took her to the post office to mail packages to her future home, called her daily to see if she needed anything or had any questions. She sent Officer Schwartz a message during that time stating, quote, "Now I don't feel alone anymore. I know people care about me and are checking on me, especially when I am all by myself here. It means a lot." Her order of protection was extended temporarily, and she was safely placed on a bus to O'Hare by a patrol officer, where she safely arrived to her new home. Officer Schwartz wanted me to make sure to provide special thanks to Prairie State Legal Services for representing her and the Boone County Township, who provided her with a transportation voucher to O'Hare. And that, one other update that was just brought to my attention. The Boone County Health Department will be recognizing the VIPs tomorrow night for their work with vaccinations. There were 17 VIPs who put in roughly 1,000 hours of volunteer work assisting in those vaccinations, and the Health Department will be recognizing them tomorrow night at the Community Building. That would conclude my update, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief regarding that update? Alderman Snow?
So is the VIP thing open to the public and what time?
My understanding is no, it's not. It's more of a reservation or invite-only type of event, and there will be a dinner or so on and so forth.
Any other questions for Chief Woody? All right, hearing none, then, we'll go to C, donations, Police Department donations for the purchase of a new canine. Chief?
Prior to reading the motion, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just give special thanks to Jeannie Baker, who is one of the people who is kind enough to donate to the canine program. So thank you, Jeannie. Greatly appreciate it. If you'll turn to the motion in your packet to accept donations for purchase of new canine, Belvidere Police Department has received two donations from citizens in our community for the purchase of a new canine for the Belvidere Police Department. One donation in the amount of $6,500 is from Bonnie Jean Baker. The other donation in the amount of $7,000 is from a citizen who wishes to remain anonymous. The Department currently has only one canine unit requesting approval to accept these donations for the purchase of a new canine. To accept, I would request a motion to accept two donations, one from Bonnie Jean Baker in the amount of $6,500, and one from an anonymous donor in the amount of $7,000 to be used for the purchase of a new canine.
I'd like to make that motion, Your Honor?
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Porter. Any other discussion? Alderman Burden?
Thank you, Mayor. And while I do greatly appreciate any donations made to the city or the city police department, I really believe that it's not a good practice to accept any anonymous donations. So I'm going to have trouble supporting this unless the motion were amended to show who the donor was, unless we could get further information on that.
I had asked that question, as a matter of fact, of Chief Woody, and he had advised me. Actually, I think I'd ask it before because I don't think that's this individual's first donation to the department. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I had asked about the anonymous donor, and he had mentioned to me that as much as I wanted to know, to thank them, that it was their wish to remain anonymous. But while I have the microphone here, I would like to thank Bonnie Jean Baker. Thank you very much. That is a nice gesture, and, you know, that's a lot of money, and it shows how much you care about the community, and we're very grateful to have you here. So it's not unusual, though, for you, because I've known you a long time, and so it doesn't surprise me. And, but as far as the anonymous donor, Alderman Burden has made his wishes, and is there anything else? Alderman Stevens?
I'd like to really embarrass Bonnie also. Thank her for all of the donations she's made in the past, and she wanted to remain anonymous, I know, and I really appreciate you doing all you've done for the city and doing that stuff. Thank you very much.
Jeannie, feel free. Well, thank you again. We really appreciate it. Nice to see you. All right, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. I have to kind of echo Alderman Brerington. I really appreciate any donations to any department, police, fire. Public Works doesn't seem to be able to conjure up many, but... Anyway, I think that donor transparency is kind of vital, especially when it comes to the Police Department of all, just because it avoids the misperception of favoritism or I just, large amounts of money especially, I think should be done in transparent, transparently. So, yeah, I mean, if we have to come up with the $7,000 ourselves, if this particular donor isn't willing to come forward, which, I mean, I guess I don't really understand the anonymity. Anyway, maybe you could explain that, why? Because, I mean, if I was donating $7,000, I would be happy to be recognized for that.
You may. Jeannie, would you do me a favor? Would you come up here to the microphone, please?
Please stay there.
Oh, okay, we're going to bring, he's going to bring the microphone to you.
My name is Bonnie Jean Baker. I live at 2100 Sunrise Drive in Belvidere, and I, as I said, I really like living in Belvidere. I can speak to that as a philanthropist. When monies are donated, then people come out of the woodwork to ask you to donate to their particular thing, and because I was one of the VIPs for almost a decade, I know that some people, for their own personal reasons, do not support the Police Department. And so giving money to the Police Department can be anonymous, by the way. You simply donate it to the Fraternal Order of Police for the officers in Belvidere, and they are required by law to forward the donation to the Police Department, and the City Council doesn't, isn't involved in it. That's something that I've done in the past, because I can't, it's difficult when people will ask you for money and be hurt that you don't support their particular cause, and it's difficult when people do not see the Police Department as favorably as I do. But anyone who wants to donate anonymously to the Police Department, just give it to the union, the police union, and that's all that needs to happen. This time I decided to be public. That's why. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any other? Alderman Fleury?
Thank you, sir. I just think that, and I can understand your concern here, but I'm also concerned for the citizens, like, thank you again for your donation, but for the citizens that do want to give to the city but don't want the spotlight, they don't want the attention. And we just saw a gentleman this evening who received a lifesaving award, and really, he would have been fine with not any kind of recognition, because some people are just introverts or want to remain anonymous, and some people, for their convictions, they feel like if they do say why they're given something, that feels that that might, you know, tarnish their donation, because they don't want credit for it, you know, a big time with given. You know, personally, for my wife and I, sometimes we've given to things that we don't want any kind of attention because, for a number of different reasons, but, so I think that I really, from my part, I don't see the concern in wanting to be known in public, but I think more importantly, I think that if citizens want to give their money, they should be able to do it anonymously, because they don't want the credit. They just want to be able to support the city in this endeavor and purposely wanting to support the canine purchase. You know, if they give to the Fraternal Order of Police, it may be, you know, maybe they can't direct exactly where they want their money to go. So again, just from my perspective and my opinion, I think it's important that we let citizens stay anonymous so that they can give and not have to shir the spotlight if they don't want the spotlight.
Alderman Snow? I didn't see, I'm sorry, Rick, Alderman Burden? I didn't see you. I apologize. Go ahead.
The reason I bring this up is I've been in Alderman two years now. The only other time I saw this, somebody wanted to remain anonymous, but we were provided with who it was, and I saw the name, and it was somebody that regularly donates. So I thought, okay. I didn't think much of it, honestly. But then I was questioned by constituents. They want to know, you know, why? Who is it? Why is it anonymous? So we're kind of putting the crosshairs here, you know? So I didn't want to go through that again, so hoping we can fix this somehow. Thanks.
Alderman Snow?
So out of curiosity, is the command staff aware, your two deputy chiefs, or just you are aware of who the donation came from?
No, the command staff knows who it was. one of those situations where this donor had agreed to provide a donation, but the stipulation was that the donor remained anonymous. It's just doing it at their request, and in an attempt to save the city some money and allow somebody to provide some support to the program, that this was the route that was requested we take, so.
And I guess I would appreciate the fact that, obviously, that helps eliminate any favoritism that might come from somebody making a donation, if that was anybody's concern, that, you know, somebody was gonna get out of a speeding ticket or something. When you have more than one player involved, you know, that kind of stuff most likely not gonna occur, and if it does, it's gonna come to light, so. And I get the point of staying anonymous. I make donations to the Feed the Need, and I don't do it in the form of a check, I do it in cash, because I don't want it thrown out there, so. So I appreciate the fact, and I think we should accept it.
All right, any other discussion? So we have a motion, then, Alderman Burden?
Yeah, I'm just, I'll go for it, and I'll make a motion to amend this to include the donor's name.
Okay, do we have a, we have a motion, then, to accept the donations, two donations with an amendment to have the donor's name, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second to that effect? Second by Alderwoman Freeman? Any discussion? Alderwoman Moho?
I'm just a little concerned with this motion. If the donor wants to remain anonymous, how can we force their name to be presented to us?
Well, you have a chance to vote. You have a vote on the amendment, right? Okay. Alderman Porter?
I think we need to keep in mind also that these donors might not necessarily be individuals. I think this, if I'm not mistaken, this last donor's donation we had for the body cams was a corporation, so I can kind of understand them wanting to remain anonymous, especially with being a, you know, donation to the police department with all the crazies out there, you know, you never know what's gonna happen with that kind of thing, so I just, I can fully understand why they would want to be anonymous.
Alderwoman Freeman?
I think there's a way you can compromise. They can still be anonymous, but it could be that it's for our eyes only, but I do think transparency is very important in government these days. So I think there's a way around, that it doesn't have to go to public eyes, but that we know, so that we can know if there's transparency or not.
Alderman Snow?
Well, at this point, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna vote no for this amended motion, so that's where I stand at this point.
Okay, anything else? So we have a motion to amend on the floor, then, at the end of the motion to be added that the anonymous donor's name be recognized?
Correct.
Thank you. So, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Okay, those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion failed. So we have original motion, then, on the floor, to accept two donations, one from Bonnie Jean Baker in the amount of $6,500, and one from an anonymous donor in the amount of $7,000 to be used for the purchase of a new K-9. Is there any other discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, Chief?
If you would turn to the motion in your packet to authorize purchase of a new K-9, Belvidere Police Department's requesting authorization to purchase a new K-9 from FM K-9 Faust McHenry K-9 in Marion Center, Michigan, at a cost not to exceed $13,500, which includes the K-9, six-week training, and housing for the duration of the training. Belvidere Police Department's received two donations in the amount of $6,500 and $7,000 from two citizens in our community who have requested that their donations be used for the purchase of a new K-9 for the Belvidere Police Department. I would request a motion to authorize the purchase of a 14-month-old Dutch Shepherd K-9 from FM K-9 in Marion Center, Michigan, as per the attached contract and purchase agreement, with payment provided by two donations in the amounts of $6,500 and $7,000.
I'd make that motion, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Alderman Stevens, we have a second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Chief, this training that the K-9 gets, is that six weeks with the trainer and the K-9, or is it just the trainer and the K-9, and then the handler just gets it already trained, or does the handler also train with them?
No, this K-9 will have some previous training prior to the handler getting to Michigan, but the training will include training for a new handler and the dog respectively, so they will train together, and they will certify in apprehension and narcotics detection, as well as tracking. So over that six weeks, they will concentrate on those areas of training, and then by the end of the six weeks, we would anticipate that the K-9 and the handler both will be certified in those areas.
Alderwoman Freeman?
So the dog stays there for six weeks, and then our officer just travels there to train with them? Or?
The officer will be there for six weeks.
Oh, the officer stays for the six weeks as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Snow?
And if I recall right, the expense, the housing for the officer is also included. The only thing that probably wouldn't be, would be, obviously, the gas to get there and meals and incidentals.
Correct.
Okay. Anything further? Any other questions? Hearing none, then, we have a motion to authorize the purchase of a 14-month-old Dutch German Shepherd K-9 from Faust McHenry K-9 in Marion Center, Michigan, as per the attached contract and purchase agreement, with payment provided by two donations in the amount of $6,500 and $7,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. Chief Woody, is that all you had?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Chief Heiser?
Belvidere Fire Department update for the past month. In the past month, the Fire Department has responded to 290 calls for emergency services. These calls range from people who have fell and need help getting up to devastating house fires. Included in these calls was our department responding to the ChemToil incident in Rockton, Illinois, on June 14, 2021. Belvidere signed a three-man engine company whose primary task was looking for spot fires in the surrounding residential area. Our guys remained on scene for 11 hours, and we were one of 85 fire departments who responded over a four-day period. Our city was delivered a devastating blow in the early morning hours of Friday, June 18. The Fire Department was called for a house fire with entrapment. Our first units on scene reported a well-involved structure fire with fires showing at most windows, and heavy smoke pushing from the eaves. Attempts were made to get to the interior stairs, where it was believed that a young woman was trapped on the second floor. Firefighters were driven back by the heat and the flames. Later, it was discovered that the stairs were burned out. Two District 2 firefighters arrived on scene and assisted our department's efforts by directing a hose stream into the windows. Our guys were attempting to use a little-used technique called Vent Inner Search, or VES for short. The technique is like this: a ladder is placed to the suspected room containing the victim, in this case, the second-story bedroom window. The firefighter breaks the window, enters the room, and searches for the victim. Firefighter Thornton searched and found an unconscious 18-year-old female lodged between the bed and the wall, and took her to Lieutenant Droll at the tip of the ladder, and then to a waiting lifeline ambulance, where she was taken to Swedes in Belvidere, clinging to her life. Unfortunately, the young lady passed away the next morning. I have her card going around. Furthermore, on this incident, I can't be prouder, there's no way I could be prouder of the efforts by all who responded that morning. The teamwork displayed, the courage that was shown to enter that structure by first-arriving police officers, and then our fire personnel, the medical response by lifeline crew members, all working in a concerted effort to rescue and save a fellow human life. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Alderman Snow?
Bring up a sad situation, but obviously, firefighter Thornton, does he, ultimately, do you wind up trying to make sure he gets mental, and the guy that took him down the ladder as well?
It's a good question. Yes, Illinois pure firefighters, pure group that they came to our station on that Sunday, and we had just a roundtable, everyone sat, everyone who was involved in it, we all just had, we're able to talk about it, and everybody just kind of, just opened up, and this is not the first time we've done this, but this is one of the worst ones since I've been a fireman for the city of Belvidere, so it was necessary, and we, yeah, we have done that, so. And we, every, continue to ask how everyone's doing, so, yep.
Any other questions for Chief Heiser on the update, or anything at all? Can you hear me? All right. All right, thank you, Chief. Is that all you had? Okay. Item three, finance, personnel, and finished business, we have none. Finance and personnel, new business, we have Shannon Hanson here tonight, our Budget and Finance Director. Shannon?
Thank you, Mayor Morris. For this particular update, it only covers the last five days, since I just started with the city last Monday. And about an hour or two after I started, our auditors showed up, and they were on-site for the remainder of the week, and they are coming back Wednesday and will be here for the remainder of this week. So the focus so far has been just providing information that the auditors need to complete their report.
Thank you, and congratulations on the auditor showing up. Thank you, Shannon. Under other, we have item A, 5A, we have dramm shop insurance. The city attorney had, I'm sure he'll want to comment on this, but essentially, we had required a $2 million amount, and it appears that not everybody was in compliance with that, and so he had done some checking, and the state requirement is much less than $2 million that we'd required, but I will turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mayor. This came to my attention, over the last two years or so, I've been much more involved in reviewing renewal applications on liquor licenses. I've always been pretty highly involved in new applications, but renewals simply were processed frequently in the past, so I've become more involved. And so each year, I've kind of picked on a new section to really focus on trying to get compliance. One that had been skipped in the past was, you know, the commercial status, whether the business entity was still valid, and did they have valid commercial lease, and I can say now that all of our establishments are current and have valid commercial leases. One of the things we looked at this year was the insurance, and did they have all the insurance that our code requires? And I was kind of surprised, back in 2011, I think it was, let me check to make sure, yes, we amended the, a great deal of the liquor code, there were some significant amendments at that point. And I'm not sure if this went in at that point, if it was sometime earlier, but I'm thinking that this provision was inserted in 2011, because it obviously stole from the village of Algonquin, which is one of my former clients, and who I looked to, I did in the past, to sneak into our code once in a while, so shame on me. But it requires two different types of insurance. One is dramm shop, which is liquor liability insurance, essentially insurance for over-serving. And of course, it requires regular commercial insurance as well. On the dramm shop side, it requires $1 million of coverage per occurrence and $2 million aggregate coverage. And a couple of, when I started calling and sending letters out to some of our license holders, saying, "You got the million, but not the 2 million," they came back and said, "2 million? Are you guys crazy?" And so I started looking around, and I did a survey of surrounding communities, and lo and behold, the only other community anywhere in the region that requires $2 million of aggregate insurance is the village of Algonquin, which is why that light bulb went off in my head. Most, the next highest is the $1 million coverage, which is our per-occurrence coverage. That's the next highest. Most range at that or less, with a great number of them only requiring the state requirement, which is $234,000 and change of dramm shop liability insurance. So needless to say, our aggregate limit is way higher than both the region or the state requirement. Now, yes, it could, in theory, provide somewhat more protection for somebody injured, but not greatly, because there's actually award limits in place of $72,000 for each person suffering damages. So on any one given occurrence, the $1 million is more than enough to cover that. So the council could, if it wished, consider amending the code to reduce the dramm shop liability requirement to simply the $1 million coverage. I think that's probably enough in case there's multiple injuries in an incident. You don't have to do that, we could leave it at the 2 million, in which case, we'll go back and require compliance with our code, but if you want to go into somewhat more consistency with the rest of the region, I do have a recommended motion at the bottom, which would be to amend Section 279 to limit the requirement for a $2 million aggregate limit for liability insurance, dramm shop liability.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Burden, second by Alderwoman Moho. Discussion, Alderman Porter?
Well, first, I wanted to ask, this $250,000, is that per year?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
I mean, to me, that doesn't seem like all that much to, you know, a company that's, you know, a business. And I guess I would question, what happens if a drunk driver that leaves their establishment hits a school bus, and a whole bunch of people are killed? Wouldn't, would a million cover that?
It depends on the number of injuries, how many are killed. You've still got the state limits of the 72,000, or, sorry, 72,671 in there, so that'd be an awful lot of people. The other aspect you gotta look at is, just because somebody drives drunk and kills somebody, doesn't mean that dramm shop's gonna cover that. They'd have to prove that that specific entity over-served, and knowingly over-served, the individual that was drunk driving. And frankly, a lot of times, you got people going from bar to bar to bar, and it becomes a proof issue, is what it does.
Alderman Snow, and then Alderwoman Freeman?
And I realize you might not have purview to this information, but to the best of your knowledge, have we had any incidents in Belvidere and/or Boone County where this is, these kind of liabilities have ever been issued, off the top of your head, that you're aware of?
I have no knowledge on where the other on that. Nor would we be party to that, we wouldn't know.
Alderwoman Freeman?
somebody, doesn't mean that dray shop's going to cover that. They'd have to prove that that specific entity over-served, and knowingly over-served, the individual that was drunk driving. And frankly, a lot of times, you've got people going from bar to bar to bar, and it becomes a proof issue, is what it does.
Alderman Snow, and then Alderwoman Freeman?
And I realize you might not have purview to this information, but to the best of your knowledge, have we had any incidents in Belvedere and/or Boone County where this is, these kind of liabilities have ever been issued off the top of your head that you're aware of?
I have no knowledge one way or the other on Nor would we be party to that, we wouldn't know.
Alderwoman Freeman?
So, Mike, these limits per person are based on the Consumer Price Index for the previous 12 months period of time. So those, do those limit numbers typically rise every year? Or, like, the Consumer Price Index fluctuates?
It depends on what the CPI does. They've actually gone down in the past, too. I was looking at some historical numbers on the state requirements. I've seen both go up and go down. Not by great deals, though, because usually I talk about a few percent one way or the other. But I have seen them fluctuate. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, you know, if the council wished to. And I'm not advocating one way or the other, this is completely over the council. But I want to make it aware that we are inconsistent with the region, in case you wanted to be more consistent.
Alderwoman Frank?
Is the reason that they weren't paying the $2 million because they didn't have the money? Why was the reason why a third of them weren't paying the required $2 million?
Frankly, I think usually it was because they didn't look and read the code. And some of them, they, when they saw that, they were, got sticker shock when they called their agents to try and get the coverage.
So, more people may comply now, if we do it to the $1 million?
Everybody's in compliance right now with the $1 million.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, then we do have a motion on the floor to amend Section 10-79 of the City of Belvedere Municipal Code to eliminate the requirement of a $2 million aggregate limit for liquor liability insurance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. The first, item B, is, I know Alderwoman Frank had been on the Boone County Council on Aging Board for quite some time. I, it seems like it's been probably almost seven years, I don't know. Six? Okay. I wasn't for sure, but six years. And she had come to me, and she had found other ways, I think, to probably entertain her time, and she had said that, you know, she would consider leaving if somebody else would step forward. I did contact as many alderpeople as I could get ahold of, and the only taker that I had was Alderman Stevens. And so I appreciate it, Alderman Stevens, so I did appoint him to the Boone County Council on Aging Board. And I wanted to thank Alderwoman Frank for six years plus of her time and her service, and greatly appreciate that. And I thank Clayton Stevens, for, Alderman Stevens, for being our new representative. So, thank you. Next, resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. Brent? Yes. Alderman Flurry?
Just go back to the other one. What are the responsibilities for being, serving on the Council Aging Board?
The responsibilities are, it's my understanding they're a liaison between the city and the, obviously, the Council on Aging. And Alderwoman Frank may want to expound.
Yeah. You go to the meeting, and you will be required to vote, but you bring it back to the council and report, like, when they have events. They do grants and, you know, functions, but they subdivide the board even into further groups, like groundkeeper and then events planner. So they, there's quite a bit, if you'd ever want to volunteer, they would take more, but you just wouldn't have voting privileges.
All right, Brent? We'd hit the resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code.
Thank you, Your Honor. In your packet is a copy of the resolution. It's an annual resolution that we pass in support of the MFT expenditure of motor fuel tax funds for general maintenance, includes our overlay projects, includes the purchase of rock salt for snow and ice control, and it also covers the thermoplastic pavement markings. So I'd recommend approval of Resolution 2021-10.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion, comments, or questions?
Here.
Alderman Snow, and then Alderwoman Freeman.
So, I'm assuming that with this, this is, kind of helps tie those two using the Illinois IDOT regulations and some of their rules, and whether it's the stop signs, the speed limits, the testing, and all that kind of stuff.
This is part of the requirements, part of the paperwork that we have to submit for utilizing motor fuel tax funds on our local projects.
Alderwoman Freeman?
So Brent, this is usually $1 million, so since this comes from the motor fuel tax funds from the state, does that amount differ from year to year, or is it usually just always $1 million?
We range anywhere from $1 million to $1,300,000, $1,400,000 probably, given on how our revenues and what our certain projects are. Sometimes there's more. This is, keep in mind, just for general maintenance purposes, so this is strictly our overlays and our thermoplastics. As we have individual projects, like Logan Avenue, you'll have a resolution coming up, probably at the next committee meeting, to authorize funds for that specific project. So every time you have to, you want to expand MFT funds, then you have to have the resolution authorizing that. So, yes, traditionally, our maintenance program is pretty consistent, which is why you're seeing that consistent number. It varies a little bit, but it's usually around $1 million.
We have any other questions for Brent? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution 2021-10, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Next, we have the item C, the COSAP Officer Cost Share. And in your packet, we had a letter from Boone County State's Attorney, and it was in regards to a co-payment that they had asked. Evidently, I was a little bit mistaken, I guess, on this. I had thought that this had come before I was in office, but it did not. But they're asking basically for a modification to 5B, adding the underlying language, "The officer shall not work any overtime assigned as defined in the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Belvedere and FOP Lodge 245 without prior consent of the Chief of Police or his designee, and the Public Health Administrator or her designee." Or her designee. So, they're asking essentially for overtime. I had, we had kind of discussed this, probably maybe putting the cart in front of the horse a little bit, because we had come in a roundabout way, talking about approving the officer that was going to replace the COSAP officer that was assigned, that was voted on. And I think at that time, there was some concern about whether or not the overtime, what the overtime was going to be out, left out, and we didn't have any specific amount that was kind of an intangible that was left out. So, I thought that I had, we had cleared that up. Chief had said, had made a comment at that time, and correct me, Chief, if I'm misstating this, but that if this were, the hire would be to occur, then we would not have any overtime. And I think at that point, I had requested that you not have any overtime, and I thought that had probably cleared it up. But prior to that, as the city attorney had informed me, the council had asked for 50-50 with that, so here we are. And, you know, I'll open it up, I guess, for a motion.
[inaudible]
Okay, so Alderman Snow made, has made a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Flurry. So with that being said, we have discussion then on the floor. So Alderman Snow?
So, this is my understanding, and Tom, you had asked for some backup from the county to pay for overtime, and I think this is an acceptable deal in the fact that there's enough oversight with the police chief and the administration of the Health Department to authorize overtime. And I'm assuming they're not going to just willy-nilly be doing that left and right, because the intent is to control that to a significant degree. But if it does occur, at least we've got some controls, and we're not footing the whole bill. And I'm glad that the county was amenable to that.
Alderwoman Freeman?
So, I don't know, Chief, is it, it's my understanding that concerning especially this COSAP officer, that any overtime that you needed her to perform, you would have had to clear with Mayor Morris first to get that authorized? So, does this take away the power from yourself or the mayor from authorizing this overtime? Can this be done by Amanda?
No, I don't think it takes away any authority that the city or the police department has. It just includes authority with the Boone County Health Department to have a say as far as the expense of that overtime as well. But the direct, the direction that the police department has from the mayor at the last meeting is that there's not going to be any overtime. And that when I had a conversation with Amanda, and just for the council's information, I know it's been stated before, Amanda has requested from the Department of Justice to include overtime into the grant. So hopefully, winter, if we hear back, if that's been approved, it can kind of alleviate some of this question. But until then, and Amanda, based off of what she's told me, is under the same understanding that there's not going to be any request for after-hour work from that COSAP officer.
Alderwoman Freeman, continue.
So, if Amanda comes to you and says, you know, "I need this officer to do some overtime," you wouldn't be able to authorize that without first getting clearance from the mayor, right? Or, and if you said, "I can't get clearance," Mayor Morris says, "No go," then she would not be able to authorize that herself?
It's not the procedure that we've had previously with just overtime in general. Overtime in general has been at the discretion of the department heads, and that's something that unless directed otherwise by either the council or the mayor, I would assume would be the same operating procedure. But I guess that is a conversation that would need to be had. And if the mayor's wishes is that pertaining to the COSAP position specifically, if he wanted unilateral authority to make that call, then that's what I would obviously do.
And I might, I just want to be clear, that whenever the council had wrestled with the replacement officer for the COSAP grant, the, one of the items that was discussed was the overtime. And in my, in my assessment, my opinion, was that I thought that the grant should have included any of the overtime or any of the intangibles before you guys, you know, before probably you had a bite at that apple, and I wished it would have. In order to get that, I felt that it was imperative to define what, you know, the overtime meant to the budget, to our taxpayers. And essentially, we're all, I'm accountable, I'm accountable to the taxpayers here, and you are too, but I don't mean to be disrespectful, but, you know, a bureaucrat in any department, and I don't, I don't say that disrespectful, I just say it as a fact, they're not responsible to the taxpayers. Ultimately, we hold the key to the finance, and I thought it was imperative that we, we point that out at the time, so that the council knew that that wasn't an issue regarding overtime. And I know the chief had made the statement, because he felt it was important to go ahead and hire that individual behind the COSAP grant being approved. And he had made that statement, and I had made the statement follow-up, that there will be no overtime, because I think that was one of the things, the expectations of the council at the time, in order to secure whether or not this was going to have merit. And I know some individuals had felt on the council that this was, this grant was, there was no money involved for the council, there was no money involved here for the taxpayers. I agree with that, there wasn't. There was a grant that was made, and we took it on face value. And now, I look at it as it's something that's added on here later. And I think there's a little bit of ambiguity about who's responsible for the purse strings for the taxpayers. So, with that being said, Alderman Porter?
Well, I've given us some further consideration too, and based on what the chief is saying, and it sounds like there is an agreement that there is going to be no additional costs to the taxpayer on this above what the grant is. So, I think this might be a duplication of, or excessive bureaucracy, you know, to pass this. So I'd like to actually make a motion to table this until we find out if the overtime is going to be approved in the grant, possibly?
Well, we could do that, you know, that's up to a second, if we get a second. But, you know, it's the chief's hopes, and it's my hopes too, that this is, if, you know, they're able to rewrite the grant, and they're be able to, they're able to obtain funding. The city didn't write the grant, the Health Department wrote the grant, I believe. I thought the grant, as I'd said before, I thought it should have included any other expenses potential, whether it be overtime or any others. I think it would have been a lot clearer, I think, when we come back later. I think that that's probably not the way that I want to do business, but that's up to the council's call. But I think if they're able to get the grant money, you know, then it's a mood issue, and if they're not, then they can bring, you can bring this back at any time, I suppose. So I don't know if we have to table it. I would like to see this come to some sort of a resolution, so that we're clear about what, what we're doing with this, the finances for this position, so. Do we have a, Alderman Porter made a motion, do we have a second to that motion? The amendment? Okay. Alderwoman Frank, I think, hit her hand up. Did you have your hand up first?
I just had a comment. I mean, we could treat this as like an insurance plan, like if, if we do go over, we have this safety net that they will help us. I mean, it's not that big of a deal if they don't ever go over, but if we do, then we have this.
Well, I think sometimes in government, I think you're in government, sometimes that's one of the problems, that's how we have overages, we have good intentions, but essentially, you know, sometimes that, that just doesn't occur. And until they are able to get, until they are able to get some clarity on the grant, whether or not the grant's going to include it, I would, I would hope that we would have it live within what the intentions were originally, so. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you, sir. So, my understanding, when we first talked about the COSAP grant, some of the concern was that, most of us thought that the grant covered everything, but then there was a concern that there might be some overtime. And so, you know, the intent was to not have overtime, but I think one of the examples you gave, Chief, if there was a certain event that happened at 8:30 at night that might be extremely beneficial to the city and to the department, that you may, in that rare occasion, approve overtime, but it would have to be, you know, an extreme case. So I think some of the concern was that if we did have overtime, that the city was going to have to fit the whole bill. But, you know, the intent was never to have them working overtime or doing anything, but just wanted to give the chief some discretion in if there was something that, you know, one hour of overtime would, you know, maybe help save some more lives or go to a community event that was absolutely necessary, that we'd be able to approve that, and then...
event that was absolutely necessary, that we'd be able to approve that. And then some of the concern was because it is for the Boone County that, I know Alderman Porter made a good idea to say, why don't we just ask the county if they would, you know, help support us if there is that rare occasion that we ever do have overtime. So, you know, from my perspective, it seems like a good idea that if, on the very, very rare, rare, rare occasion that we have overtime, that the county is going to, you know, support us in that. And all they're asking is to add one more person, like we said, having more oversight. So I think that seems to be a reasonable expectation. And I don't think it's putting anybody at harm here. If we don't approve this, that just means that if there isn't a case where we have overtime, that we're just going to have to fit the whole bill. So to me, it makes sense that we go ahead and approve this. And again, I don't think it's ever going to be used. And again, hopefully, you know, we can add the overtime into the amendment into the grant. But if not, it just gives us some flexibility if there is ever an occasion where it would be really great if we had our COSAP officer at this event. We're not fitting the whole bill. We have some support from the county. So I do appreciate the county supporting this.
If I may, I'd, I'd like to remind the council that the county health department wrote the grant. They could have put the overtime in. They also set the hours. The hours were, you know, not going to be weekends. They were not going to be night. I think some council members had asked the question about what those hours are going to be, and are they going to be most effective to deal with any drug overdose between the hours of what, eight and 4:30? And so, you know, with that being said, you know, that wasn't, that wasn't in the, that wasn't presented to the council that way. The hours were presented as is, and the grant did not have any funding in accordingly. So that's, you know, there's going to be a council call, but I'll, like I said, I, I believe that, you know, we live within agreement, and that was the agreement. And I would ask that you do that. But Alderman Snow?
I get the administration's view on that. But at this point, the, based on the update we got with the 48 calls for service that COSAP officers already participated in, those calls potentially, if they were not done under the COSAP portion of this, may have incurred multiple officers to respond after their regular shift and for coverage. So it's going to be hard to quantify whether or not having this person participate in a lot of these things ultimately winds up leading to less overtime or less cost by other officers having to be used for other things involving these same individuals. So I believe that I'm going to vote yes for this motion.
Okay. Alderman Porter?
Well, let me just ask a question here that I just kind of thought of. Am I not mistaken that as citizens in the city, we pay both county and city taxes, don't we? And doesn't that mean that we're actually, it's kind of a moot point in a way, because if we're paying both those taxes, we're really not, I mean, if there's a split, we're still, basically, it's coming out of two different pockets, right?
Well, it is, but we have a budget to live within, and so does the county. I mean, essentially, they have their own budget, you know? They have money, funds that they've set aside. And, you know, they had, I don't, I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, but I don't believe that, you know, whenever this was written, they had offered to pay the 50%, they had offered to pay anything. So they wrote the grant. They didn't make that offer. They didn't put it in the grant. And that's the way I look at it. I think we're, you know, it sounds great. I don't know what those numbers are that the Alderman Snow had pointed out. I have no idea what those numbers are. And I, I think, I don't think you do either. I don't know. But I do know that, you know, it's up to the tax, it's up to us to represent the taxpayers. And so if you want to go ahead and issue an agreement that pays 50%, you know, then that's your call. But I would ask that you don't. So we have a motion. Alderwoman Freeman?
Yeah. So the other thing that bothers me about this, there's a sentence at the end where it's, if there's other costs other than overtime associated with the officer's services that are not reimbursed as a grant-eligible expense, because there will be, the city may request reimbursement from the county on a case-by-case basis. They're not saying we will split any and all over the grant coverage costs with you guys. They're saying, you, you bring these things to us and, and we'll think about it. Because I personally believe there's going to be many occasions of that. So I will be voting no.
Alderman Burden?
Thank you, Mayor. Since apparently we're going to be voting on approving this, I'm going to give it another shot and offer an amendment. So I would like to strike the word overtime from the second paragraph in the first sentence. So I'd like to strike that. And then in the one, two, three, fourth line in the same paragraph, I'd like to strike COSAP officers' overtime. So that, then the paragraph would just read that they would want us, help us pay for 50% of any costs.
Okay. And so the, that motion, does that, to the city attorney, does that include or exclude any overtime? Would that include or exclude any overtime cost by having just costs?
I haven't heard a second yet, but going before that, I guess. I would presume that your motion also would strike then the last sentence, which then makes it up to them whether they reimburse those or not.
I was just going to add that as well.
That being said, that language would basically say, anything that's not grant-covered, you split 50/50. Which, by the way, is essentially what we proposed to them, and this is what they responded with.
So we have a motion then for an amendment on the floor. Do we have a second to that amendment? Second by Alderwoman Frank. So then my question still is, does that include overtime costs, even though it isn't stated costs, under costs? Does that fall under the, is that to be, would that be legally binding then? Cost, cost would mean overtime? That's a cost?
That's the way I would read it. But.
Need to restate it?
I don't think so. Any expense or costs is, that would include anything under the sun.
Okay. So essentially, this would be, this would cover all costs, including overtime the way that it's stated?
Right.
But, but we're going to strike that last paragraph. I mean, essentially, I believe the mayor publicly says we were going to have no overtime on this. So I'd like to stick with that. Attorney Drela?
So, it's probably outside my purview a little bit. You may recall at the time that the hiring of the backfilling officer was being debated before the council, there was a lot of talk about this. Even though they're technically unrelated, we spent a lot of time talking about overtime. And the mayor looked at the council, and looked at the chief, and said, there will be no overtime, period. That was the direction the chief, you're not to incur overtime unless you clear it with the mayor. And in my mind, this, that made all this completely moot and irrelevant. Alderman Porter then the next week made a motion to request that we ask the county to amend the agreement to provide that they would pay for one-half the cost of overtime costs and other expenses. We sent that letter to the county and asked them to jump through the hoops to do that. They came back with this proposal, which is basically what we asked them to do, less all the other expenses. We were spending a lot of time talking about this. The direction from the mayor still, there will be no overtime. You know, it, it comes down to something as simple as that. But in the meantime, we've now asked the county to jump through a bunch of hoops, and we may be asking to jump through additional hoops as we negotiate additional terms back and forth. But as long as we say there is no overtime, then there's no overtime. And the other aspect of it is, there's already agreement in place that doesn't govern any of these other expenses. So it's up to you what you want to do with it. But my understanding is there'll be no overtime.
And, you know, with that being said, I was trying to be forthright with the council when I made that statement, because I think the council had, was concerned about overtime. And I was. So I thought that was pretty clear. I don't think it can be any clearer. But if we have any, you know, we have a motion and a second then on an amendment. And on the amendment, Alderwoman Freeman had her hand up first, then Alderman Snow?
So basically, we, the amendment is our original ask of them, which they rejected and sent us this instead. So we're going to say, well, we reject you, and we're going back to our original ask.
That's what we'll be doing, essentially.
Right. Which they're going to, who knows, reject. They rejected the first one. And the overtime being authorized by the mayor is one thing. I, I was as concerned about the other associated expenses that are not reimbursed as grant-eligible as well. And they have come back with, you know, you can ask us on a case-by-case basis, but it doesn't mean we will, and doesn't mean we won't. So to my, I mean, to my mind, that's like, yeah, you're not going to get anything else from us other than half of the overtime, which you've already said you're not going to authorize. So this thing is pretty pointless to me, other than it gives Amanda more leverage.
That section does not, no. That provision has more to do with the county approving that, not, not the, the health director. She would only have the, the say on the occurring of the overtime if the chief through the mayor concurred. That section would have to be approved by the county, not necessarily by the health department. It is actually what the current situation is. I mean, that is what the current situation is. That doesn't change anything. But you're right. It does not meet us where I had drafted the original language that we sent to them. From one perspective, I, I know where they're coming from. If we were, if you reversed the shoes, well, what expenses are out there? What do we not know about? You know, they're thinking of it, they're actually thinking of it the same way you're thinking of it. So from that perspective, I kind of understand where they're coming from. But you're not wrong on that. Now, what other expenses are there out there? I don't know. As far as ancillary expenses, I mean...
Yeah, there hasn't been any. And, you know, unless there's something that, yeah, we've already put her in a position where she has an office, the equipment that she needs, and has already begun her work out on the streets. At this point, all of the other additional expenses are included in the grant that we've come across. And I, I can't anticipate what I don't know at this point.
Alderwoman Freeman, is that all? Okay. Alderman Snow?
And my understanding of the grant was that it is fair, it was fairly broad in the incidental expenses that might be occurred for supplies and equipment that the officer would need to accomplish the mission. So I'm going to vote no for the amendment.
Any other questions? Any other concerns? Comments? Okay. So then we have an amendment on the floor to remove on the first sentence, the first line, overtime. On the fourth line, after officers, COSAP officers, remove overtime. And then it's my understanding, the last sentence, strike the last sentence. Is that correct with the motion, or the original motion? Alderman Burden, I want to make sure I get it right.
Pretty much, Mayor. We're just looking to strike, yeah, anytime, anything with the overtime, yeah, I see it in the last sentence. And then as well as the, the last paragraph, I believe, as well. Or just the last sentence?
This... I would say that if you, if, if, I know, if you were to strike the last sentence of that first paragraph, that's in quotes, I think that's necessary as part of your motion. Which is what you clarified before there was a second. The other aspect is in that last paragraph, which is what Alderman Burton's alluding to, there's the clarification who can approve overtime. Again, if you're going to, if you're going to make a change where there might be outside expenses, I think you want that approved by the chief. I can see where they'd want their health department person to have also say in it because they don't want us approving overtime that they don't want paid for. But it does take some authority away from us because we can't unilaterally assign overtime, at least COSAP overtime. But you could also restrike that if you wanted as well.
Specifically, which one was it? So I, I...
It's in the last paragraph. It's down here.
Well, we have the amendment, as I understand it, unless I'm wrong, is that right?
That's correct, Mayor.
What you agreed upon?
Yes.
Okay. So with that being said then, all those in favor of the amendment as stated, signify. We can have a roll call vote. Will, when their name is read, answer yes? Any opposed, nay?
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Nay.
Mahal?
Nay.
Porter?
Nay.
Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
Nay.
Stevens?
No.
Two in favor?
Motion to amend, motion to amend failed. So, did we have an original motion then?
You did. I'll mush my snow in a second, my flurry.
Thank you. We did. So the original motion on the floor then is to accept this letter as written. Is there any other discussion or debate on that? Okay. Hearing, hearing none, we'll, we'll do a roll call vote. I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. Alderman Porter?
Well, I was just going to comment that I, I think I'm going to trust Mayor Morris's, what he's saying, that there is going to be no expenses whatsoever, overtime or whatever on this. So I'm more in favor of waiting to see what they get with the, with the grant, if they're going to rewrite the grant, and see if they can get additional expenses. So I would say I'm going to probably vote no on this, and just go with the agreement.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote on this as well. Those in favor will answer yes. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Nay.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Nay.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
No.
Six in favor?
Okay. Motion passed. All right. All right. Having nothing, oh yeah, we do, yes, we do. We have an executive session. Executive, executive session pursuant to section two C five of the Open Meetings Act to discuss the purchase or lease of real property, including the discussion of whether a specific parcel should be acquired. So, do we have a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Motion, a second by Alderwoman Prather. All those in favor, will, when their name is read, answer yes, those opposed, no?
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?